Apologies for being receiving councillors Jefferson, Peters and Stilwell.
Item 1062, declarations of any discloseable key interests. That's item 10725, with the minutes of the last Heritage and Events Committee to receive and confirm the minutes of the Heritage and Events Committee meeting held on the 20th May as a true record and be signed by the committee chair. Are we all happy with the meetings that they have? Yeah. Sign those. Now, if we can just skip down to 11325, so Kate and Sue Herbert. The reason for that, oh, it didn't change. Okay.
Yes, of course.
So 11325, which is the flag policy. So this is to receive and agree to the proposed changes to the flag policy previously discussed at the Heritage and Events Committee held on the second debate call. We need to approve the proposed changes.
The policy is so big, it takes me. The windows I've opened are blocking my...
Yeah. I can't find... Go with this, yeah?
Thank you, you just back that far. What we did is, as you know, we've had a couple of meetings where we've discussed the flag policy. At the last meeting, it was agreed that we would fly the Union Jack on top of the Guild Wall and so other flags would be flown and then we'd bring it down and we'd use a temporary base for the Union Jack and the other flags would go up. And while we were just working through that, we actually thought, well, it's actually, and as officers, we should have actually raised it before. It's actually not necessarily the most logical way to use resources. So what we last come back to is recommend that the Union Jack remains flying on the building at all times and the other flags, we have a temporary flag pole and we bring them in and out, which we can do into this particular building rather than sending the staff up to do that part of it, which is a health and safety, there's a staff efficiency issue. The biggest challenge is around Pride Month because you fly a flag for such a long period of time, but it's, if we use the policy as we previously had it, you're still sending people up to bring down the Pride flag and then, or put in the Pride flag, bring back the Union Jack, it would be heaven to bring the Union Jack and out from the temporary bases. So I think that's the major change. So like I said, as officers, if I was a bit more aware, I would probably pick that up at that time, but we didn't send it in the end of our last documentation. So that's one of the changes. And I figured there's some other change we put into the table and it shows there, which is the duration in which we fly the flags. So Honeymoon Memorial Day is one week, Commonwealth Day is one day, so George's Day is one day, Pride Month is twenty-six days, so my eyesight is not that good. Norfolk Day is one day, Farm Forces is one day and then the Remembrance Flag, that's the period that it's up. So they will all be on the temporary flag pole on the market square and brought in and out of the building to ensure that they don't get vandalised, damaged or in, whether it's wind, weather or individuals. And that's the only changes that we've proposed to the flag policy. So if these changes are accepted, then we can declare it and take the flag policy to count.
Okay. Any comments?
Yeah, really happy with the changes that they made, I think it's great. Is there an opportunity to put a link in to the government website for flying flags? The reason I say that is because then, when we're all long gone, any member of staff can go to that document, it's embedded within it and then go, right, the correct thing to do or correct way to do it is this. And it's just there, it's linked with our document then, is that okay? And it's just a government website for flying flags in the United Kingdom.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, yeah.
But it doesn't change what we have now, but it's just an addition.
The proposals, like, can we have a proposal then for those recommendations to approve the proposed changes?
Do.
On a second day, Mike, all in favour? Right, so that's the policy. And then we'll move on to 11425, which is VJ Day 80 Commemoration. And this is to receive and review the proposals for the VJ Day 80 Commemoration. And we need to approve the programme of events for the VJ Day 80 Commemoration.
The differing signs between the sun and catch.
I was just waiting to be asked. And so obviously, I've put together a proposal in the document of what we were proposing to do. Obviously, we're looking at a cooperative approach with the rest of the town and trying not to overlap what other people are doing, so that the town gets stuff to do throughout the day rather than us put stuff on at the same time as Major House or other partners, for instance. And so that's why we came up with the plan, to make it run alongside everything else. Things have moved on a little bit and it's worth noting that we found out that what our idea to do a trail around town, there's actually going to be another one running at the time by, about Denver, which sounds wonderful. So it might need a little bit of revisions, make sure again, that's not something that's going against each other. But I think that was just a small point, just when I spoke with Karen Emma about promoting our event, I came across that and I thought, well, I'll just leave it as an individual meeting. And with regards to that, with things moving on, we actually came to our attention today that there had been some prior conversations before I took over VJ Day, when Dad's Army were going to be involved and so they're happy to work with us. And so that's a positive thing again. We just weren't aware of it before we put this paper on, so apologies for that. But we're now in conversations with them and we think that's absolutely brilliant. And obviously, that's such a wonderful thing to be proud of for the town. So that will be something that we'll be incorporating into our day and obviously, I can update you all on how that comes in. But when I say hot off the press, I got off the phone while eating my tea to come here and pound that out. So I do apologise that that wasn't there before. But yeah, it's just about obviously, working alongside the success of VE Day, a lot of the sort of community spirit that we have and just try and create that obviously on a smaller scale with budgetary concerns, but really linking into what people liked about the look and feel and the sort of family event type of thing, that was the rationale behind it.
Good. Mike?
Thank you. I agree that VJ Day is an important day and should be honoured each year. I do think it's a bigger issue which is often neglected, which is, it wasn't just victory in Japan, it was the end of the Second World War. And actually, I think that's far more important than VE Day. VE Day was the end of one theatre of conflict. It wasn't the end of the war and we celebrate, no, it's the wrong word, we commemorate the end of wars throughout history, particularly in our case in Britain in the First World War and the Second World War. But we don't do it properly in the Second World War, we call it VJ Day and it's forgotten that this is the end of the most enormous horrible conflict, certainly in European history, possibly in the world. And we really ought to be finding a way, even on the trail, of saying, and it was the end of the Second World War, not just, it was the end of a war. Well, we call it VJ Day, which is a long thing anyway, victory in Japan, it's kind of slightly off title. Most of the fighting was done in nastier places. Can we please make sure that we mention the fact that this is also the end of the Second World War?
Mike?
Yeah. Yeah, so obviously, I've probably talked more about what we were planning to do without going through it all, but we are going to be having the flag raising as part of that. So we'll be having a special ceremony for commemoration and thinking about it. Obviously, we've got the Fee Power celebrations that we'll be doing. And I think I mentioned in this paper, but I have rewritten it a few times, that this really was the forgotten soldiers, the forgotten thing. So it is about raising the profile and making sure people are aware of that. And our 80 stories that we did with VE Day, and I was very clear through all parts of that, that this was a long campaign that included VJ Day because we knew that the war wasn't over, we weren't celebrating the end of the war, we were very clear. So that will be also resurrected, we'll be having those display boards put out with more about how this contributed to the war and obviously to the end of the war. So it is something that we have considered, but take a point and make sure that is seen through.
So the recommendation is to approve the programme of events to commemorate VJ Day 80. Are we happy with that, bearing in mind that we need to mention that it is the end of the war and not a separate event? Have we got a proposal for that? To approve the programme? It is.
I just...
A proposal for... And that, are you seconding? We're all happy with that. Could be, yes, definitely. Yeah, thank you. Right, thanks for your... 10825, which has been brought on the activities of the Heritage and Events team since the last meeting. That's to receive the report, the activities of the Heritage and Events team. This is just a note report and I believe I'm doing this?
I am, so. Our Heritage and Events manager wasn't feeling very well, so he's gone home. He wasn't looking very happy to hold that, so I think at five o'clock he decided that he was going to go about for himself. What the report does is really to summarise is the events that have been held, or the events that have been held within the venues. We don't, obviously, haven't commissioned any or a lot of these events, these are all third party events. We've had the civic event, which is set up in the report. We've had a number of changes in personnel, the whole team has virtually changed. So we have a full-time senior Heritage and Events officer started a week ago, so he's settling in. And I think the bigger thing to really to highlight is, in the last report, we had significant number of challenges, I think it was past the past challenges. What we've done is we've put that into a game chart, we've put, we've put in timeframes towards getting that resolved and then we'll start really reporting against that. So hopefully at the next meeting, you can start saying, in terms of the challenges in the bar, in terms of the challenges with the venue bookings, in terms of the challenges with venue management, marketing, all those things, that we've actually made some progress. So hopefully there will be some, not hopefully, there will be some to report about and to include that. So we, like I said, the team is going through transformation, it is going through a lot of change and it's really just a matter of nodding, we can start making inroads into those challenges.
Eddie, any comments? Mark?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that being able to do a proper wash up at the end of our events is really important and we haven't always had the information in the past and then we haven't been able to compare it, that's the most important thing. So being able to compare, and I know some of them are apples and oranges, but being able to compare events to each other and see if all the criteria has been covered off is really important because I think that's where we've fallen down in the past. We've pulled it out of the bag at the last minute and not really done a proper wash up to see what happens next year. So thanks for that.
So this just needs us to note, that report.
Just pre noted.
Yeah, is everyone happy to note that? Right. 10935, which is the calendar of future events.
As you know, we started this in the last few meetings ago and we're really just trying to keep it up to date. A lot of our events that we do as a town council are focused around VE Day and you can see by the amount of money that we've allocated to that function which happened in May, it was a significant part of our budget. So when you look at the schedule in front of you, you'll see that that in yellow is what's, is what's happened and what we've, we've got remaining for the rest of the year. We are seeking to increase the Christmas Light Switch On Fund. We made significant amounts of money from the bar operation in the VE Day, so we transferred in that to this particular fund, so that had boosted. We're also, our marketplace summer programme is not going to be as extensive as we initially planned, so it's likely we'll not have all of that money, we'll go back to Christmas Lights. So the big, the big kind of event that we planned for now is the Christmas Light Switch On, which will be, I can't remember, it's the last, I think it's the last Friday. We, we are really starting from scratch again, so part of the game chart in terms of activities, we're starting to plan summer events next year, we're starting to plan our big, whatever our summer event is going to be this year, this VE Day, what our next event will be, you know, we go back to drawing board, we're planning for Christmas Light Switch On and we're starting for our summer events next year. I think we came to the committee at the last meeting and we just explained that we had just, there was just too little time to get the programme together, that we would kind of do a very light touch on this particular summer programme, but we'll start handling in the local detail for the next year's election. But then, like I said, most of the events are happening, third party events and the promoters, that's it.
Yeah, so just on our set events that happen every year, and those are regulars. There's one other event that happens every year and it's growing in popularity and that's Angler in Bloom. And it, and it always, I always think that we do this kind of inwardly as a council with the staff and we've had some great outreach this year with the children coming in and local businesses. I think there's a great opportunity there to do at very least the ability to walk around a tour of what's been done, because I think it will just add to it. It doesn't have to be a big event, but I do think we ought to align something with, something that we put a lot of effort into, quite frankly.
See that best, looking into our processes.
We have to note that then, so that's all we need to do as well. 111025, financial report there and with 32 June 25. And this is again, just to note the financial report.
I think we rationalise a lot of the things that we've been doing, can you see, we've been promoting events, we've been partnership events, we're doing all that, and you really couldn't make sense of that through the financial information that's been reported. So what we've done is we've gone through and we've slotted it a bit. There are three key components, there's the civic side of running the council and this is where we set up all the civic events that we do. And you'll see, there's a lot of items in the full year budget, which is on the right hand side, the green, dark green comment, a lot of those events are still going to happen, but at least we keep track of that and a bunch of the thought in there. We've added some of the other events, like the Christmas Light Switch On, and I see already other states, I'm very embarrassed and I've started, I was looking through the line up. Now, Christmas Light Switch On, 5329, that is actually the contract that we, that we go out and tend for three years. And then we have the Christmas Light Switch On, which is in the Programme of Future Event for very small amounts of money and all the other costs associated with the civic department are set out in this particular schedule. So you can get an idea of how much it's cost us to run our civic function within the council. The next one is, is our Heritage and Events Town Event, Town Events. That is very small, leads to a whole lot of issues, Halloween parties and discos and Easter egg hunts, et cetera. We haven't done that this year because we've had all the staff changes. So there's very little activity, we didn't budget for civic activity, we only budgeted for a relatively small amount of events. I'm very embarrassed, we've just seen a mistake and the council can't make mistakes like that. The income doesn't add up, it should be 5,700. And then the events, again, we haven't done very much in terms of the events, all we've done is we've assumed that, you know, a summer programme, I doubt we're going to spend £2,000, I think the last figure I heard is about 1,500. We have some sundry equipment that we buy for some of the other events, I'll use that, it's quite significant, that's, that's a significant cost. And our vet marketing, we've added two and a half thousand for in terms of the budget and there's been very little spend against that. And then the last one is what we call the commercial operations of this particular committee. We've got the bar income, the venue hire. So this is what we're tracking, this is where we hold the Heritage and Events team accountable to actually start generating income from this particular facility, ensuring that we maximise the working opportunities, running it on a commercial basis. And there's the cost there. Unfortunately, having to cost on drugs, for example, if you look at bar purchases, they look exceptionally high relative to the bar sales. And the reason for that is we've taken out the VE income bar sales, because that was really easy to quantify, but we haven't taken out the purchases relative to the VE bar sales. So you'll see, our income and our bar income is quite high, exceeding VE Day bar sales, but our purchases are higher than budget because we include all the costs. But generally, you know, this, this process does take a while to bed in. Our commercial operations, we've set a little bit of a tight budget, but we're hoping that this will be significantly exceeded from an income perspective and we'll be able to contain our costs. So sorry, it's a bit technical, but...
You can, yeah.
Sorry, I have got a question. It's, it's about the Carnegie and Gildor salaries massively up and it does say that that will come down. Is there a specific reason why it's so much more?
Before your budget is, I have broken down every single selling budget to an individual, so I could actually name individuals towards that. We allocated all the salaries for the Heritage and Events team comes into here except for civic salaries. We've also changed the structure of the team, it's quite a heavy team, so there might just be a lot of allocations to it. But included in there is you've got cleaning costs, so we have a cleaner that cleans this particular building. We had, I think we put communication costs in here, it shouldn't be there, so that I might have to just, well, that might have to refine that. So overall, the budget probably is, there should be some office and corporate services not in Heritage and Events. You know, fortunately, getting the numbers out was a challenge.
I completely understand, I'm not, I have no problem with, you know, what money's been spent. My concern is that it is so different from previous years and we must have done something different in the interim to make it up.
The biggest change is around, we changed the staffing model. So we have a sessional staffing model, so we don't have people sitting Monday to Friday and then employing sessions on the weekend. We now have sessions used a lot more silently and targeted through the whole working week. And we, like I said, we've changed the structure of the team. We don't have an education person anymore, we don't have our own internal promoters of events because we just went, you know, they were costing more than they were generating income.
That's fine, thanks.
Any other comments? Are we happy to just note the financial report? 111125, progress on actions from previous meetings.
There was some outstanding actions, which we wanted to employ people as mace bearers and sword bearers, we managed to do one, we've still got to do the other one, so that's probably come off the focus area, so we'll put that back on. We've got to get together, we, last year, we decided to have a celebration for our volunteers and give them some recognition because we were supposed to organise an event in July 2025. Unfortunately, just due to the staff changes, some stuck records, I do apologise, that's just, we'll push that back to later on in the year. The booking fee forfeiture, we just threw an order to that just to make sure that everything's right there. And then the last one, I think it's, it's not the last one, but if you go down to 2825, quite far down the, the update in the community groups, I'm not too sure what to instruct the communications officer, because I'm not too sure whether we just let this slide or whether we actually make the principal point. Just to sensitize the committee, as you know, we decided to keep the community groups, that message wasn't portrayed, a total different message and it's what, do we want to take back control of owning that message that we did not, that any of the community groups go, we did not ask anyone to leave? And it's a tough one because there's also the adaptive types, you know, it's April, not July.
Yeah. Yeah, we discussed that at length, didn't we? I don't really know what to suggest on that, probably not use the word, the term, let it slide. But I think one way or another, we need to communicate with those groups what, what our intention was really, even if, even if it's late.
I'll raise the time clock on that and see if we can get some done, that's the view of the committee.
I think we picked it, I know it's a while since that happened, but we did discuss it a lot and we did a couple of meetings and we decided that, you know, what we do and then they were told differently. So I think it's important that the moral that we, we wanted them to stay.
Yeah.
The decision that was made, wasn't it, that we wanted them to stay, wasn't communicated by them. Yeah.
The other ones that has, there's a lot of progress and that is what just...
Yeah. So it's just... Everything else is just ongoing, yeah. Yeah, so again, that's just to note that, we're happy to note that with the things we discussed.
One one hundred and fifty, just now, it's gone down again, but we're sure it's all...
Yeah, it's up.
It's up again. Sonia?
Oh, Sonia, oh. Sorry, Sonia.
It's okay, what I've got to say is I'm happy to arrange a meeting with the groups and discuss future needs and the fact that we were more than happy to keep them at our premises free of charge.
Thank you. Sorry, I haven't got the right glasses on to be able to see you. Okay. Moving on then to 11225, which is the civic policy. To, this is to receive and review the new civic policy and it's basically to review the civic policy.
But civic policy was true in its entirety, a lot of the major changes were, and additions are highlighted in yellow within the particular document. And it really is just to provide, you know, I think it's part of the ongoing improvements that the time clock has implemented in all areas of the council. This again, is just one of those areas that we've kind of gone through continuous improvement and we've picked up some issues that just need to be adjusted and that the policy is robust and relevant as possible.
So, I think Sonia's got a handle, Sonia.
There isn't, I've updated most of the policy. Unfortunately, the policy hadn't been updated since 2017, so it was very out of date. So what I've done is made quite a few changes that most of mine are not updated in yellow because I made so many changes, it's quite significant changes.
Thank you. Any other comments on the civic policy? I mean, it's quite, yeah, thank you for doing that, Sonia, it's quite a lengthy document and it did need updating. So are we happy to approve the policy? We've got a proposal on second after that? So are we happy to approve the policy, we've got a proposal and second after that?
I don't think we did.
Oh, sorry.
It's just, it's just one check.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry, that Doug did mention, I don't remember where it is, but
Point six.
Point six three. Yeah, it has a, it says that a dress should be worn under the robes, rather than formal, a formal dress, rather than formal dress. So rather than anybody having to wear a dress under their robes, but
I have no problem with either.
So we just need to have that amended, I think it's just the letter A needs to come out, doesn't matter.
And just to also sensitize the committee, the one difference between the document that you've got said and the document that we've changed now is that previously we had the civic officer reporting to the, to the town clock. We've changed that to be the deputy town clock for the reporting lines, and the administration has done, and done my guys. But the town clock is still involved in the ceremonial part of the civic policy, still involved. I'm just the line manager of the civic officer going forward, and that's just to recognize a change that could possibly happen when the with the Guildhall Carnegie goes on its own, the civic function remains in the council, and that's just to ensure that that happens. So Kate will report to me from a line management perspective, but from civic, from a civic perspective, and in terms of ensuring that everything happens, reporting the time clock. So that change will be made to the document, that the circularity, it's just the reporting line of the civic officer.
Yeah, I think it's really good, sorry. And I think it's also good that it's highlighted what each of the parties is made up of. So, you know, the recent laying partners. I think the important thing about that is, now that we've got the document, we stick to it, because we've made so many errors in the past, you know, which upset some quarter or another, so now we've got it and we've reviewed it, let's stick with it. Good.
I think it's very clear, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
It's very good, and I don't think, I couldn't think of anything that was missed out of there at all. So we need to approve this policy, so have we, with those, picking up the rest of it?
Just paragraph six point three, the change in the reporting line, which is down the document
Yeah.
that would be terrible.
So once that, so are we happy to, have we got a proposal and second to approve that, Mike? Suppose, Tyler's second, thank you. Like the pictures of all your That's it? That's the end of the meeting? The end of the meeting?